Call the City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder, Whitman, Delgrave, Vining, Germany, Lomore, Mayor Clark.
Present. All please rise for the invocation. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Grant us the strength to manage the challenges ahead and the wisdom to identify opportunities as we strive to serve our community. As we make decisions, grant us the gift of an open mind, the willingness to learn, and the humility to accept the ideas of others. Please help us recognize diversity as a blessing and unity as our strength.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please.
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and for approval of payments to the vendors, and the amount should read $955,910.52. 955-910.52.
Please.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the regular agenda.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have Mr. Pastu. pulled for further discussion? Councilwoman Delgrave?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm trying to pull up the agenda real quick here. I'm going to ask one change on the consent agenda, and that would be item number 3601, Authorization
I'd like 3596 pulled on the Custer Airport.
Other items from City Council for items on the consent agenda to be pulled?
for Code Enforcement, Legal Action. I'm going to ask that we put that under Council Action.
Question, Your Honor. So normally, we would take 3601 and just pull it from
One of the properties we're going to ask to be withdrawn from that request.
the consent agenda, but in this case, 3601 is, we're handling it the way it was requested
Anything further?
previously.
That's correct.
Okay.
No.
The consent agenda, and this item being requested, if approved, is the consent Council, any items on the agenda? If not, need approval of the regular agenda. agenda would also go to the-
Correct.
-Council Action.
Correct. Just, I just wanted to clarify, they both end up in the same place.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Other items from the council on the consent agenda? See, and none? Is there
I know that we approve the regular agenda with the changes.
any items on the consent agenda, those present here this evening, wish to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda? See, and none? Councilwoman Felder? Motion by Councilwoman Vining, supported by Councilwoman Felder, that approval of the regular agenda with the item 3601 being removed from the consent agenda and placed
Yes, sir.
Whitman?
Yes.
Delgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germany?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
under Council Action.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and for approval of payments Whitman?
Yes.
Delgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germany?
Yes.
to the vendors, and the amount should read $955,910.52. 955-910.52.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Councilwoman Delgrave?
Yes, sir. I'd like 3596 pulled on the Custer Airport.
Other items from City Council for items on the consent agenda to be pulled?
Question, Your Honor. So normally, we would take 3601 and just pull it from the consent agenda, but in this case, 3601 is, we're handling it the way it was requested previously.
That's correct.
Okay.
The consent agenda, and this item being requested, if approved, is the consent agenda would also go to the-
Correct.
-Council Action.
Correct. Just, I just wanted to clarify, they both end up in the same place.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Other items from the council on the consent agenda? See, and none? Is there any items on the consent agenda, those present here this evening, wish to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda? See, and none? Councilwoman Felder?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we accept all items on the consent agenda, that they be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted, excluding those ones pulled for further discussion.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Felder, supported by Councilwoman Lomore, that items remaining on the consent agenda that have not been pulled for further discussion be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Delgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germany?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Clerk, next item, please.
So the next item on the agenda is Presentations, Communications, and Public Hearings. Item 3597, Proclamation, Rants Allen Group Day.
Thank you. I'm going to make a few comments here today, but also give the council and the public the opportunity to understand when the proclamation will be presented in person, but also in full. So the requests came from residents and community regarding recognition and honor proclamation regarding the, to celebrate the life and accomplishments of the Rants Allen Group. And I'm sure with everybody in the community would know the Rants Allen Group from their beginnings here in Monroe, how they formed their gospel group, but also a broad range of music. Many years ago, in 1969, actually, they were the final act of the former concerts we had in the park regarding the jazz, and they closed the session. I keep that as a point that I remember that we last saw them as a community collectively. So there's much other items here within the proclamation that will be read when we present the proclamation to the community, but also to the requesters on July 3. And I will say it's going to be on Elmira Street, I think by Wood, it would be the location that's being proposed and planned and requested. It does tie to some other items on the agenda, which we'll get to later. But, you know, it's a great honor for the city and the residents to be recognizing the Rants Allen Group for the significant contributions to the Monroe community since their early beginnings, through their gospel music industry, and throughout the internationally renowned career that they've had. I'll kind of stop there because many awards and recognitions that will be presented on July 3. I don't have a time at this point, but it'll be something that will, I'll be placed on the city's website, Facebook, through our communications director. And if anybody has that time, we'll try to get that yet here today. So, but this proclamation is the, for the, for the City Council to proclaim the day for the Rants Allen Group Day. We look forward to presenting that, and I hope that we all can attend, as well as the community attend, so we can continue to give that recognition. So, clerk, I think I'll stop there, unless otherwise, I'll be reading the entire thing. And I think it's why we want people to come to the celebration of their career, but also their community involvement. So, thank you. Next item, please.
The agenda is item 3604, Public Hearing for Proposed Ordinance 22-003, and there are no comments on file in the Clerk Treasurer's office.
Thank you. So as we'll start here, I'll open the public hearing. It's the public hearing regarding Proposed Ordinance 22-003, and it's the ordinance related to the mobile retail within the city, mobile vending food trucks. And there's various chapters on here. I'll see if there's any public comments from those present here this evening. Any comments in this public hearing regarding item 3604? See, and none? I'll close the public hearing. And I know this comes back and is an action item for the City Council later, if there's any additional discussion. Clerk, next item, please.
So the next item, we begin Council Action, item 3579, Ordinance 22-003, Mobile Retail Ordinance, up for its final reading.
Thank you. I'm going to look, Mr. Pastu, if there's anything additional. If not, I know that Clerk Treasurer Lavoy yourself championed this through for the city as well. If there's, see if there's maybe any thoughts, or if not, we'll go forward.
No, I think, I think we've covered everything in our previous discussions. Of course, it's a dynamic ordinance, as all ordinances are, so we will monitor its implementation and, and make any adjustments in the future as necessary. We'll bring that back to council, and council can decide.
So it's the council. Councilwoman Lomore?
Yeah, I make a motion to place Proposed Ordinance 22-003, an ordinance to adopt Chapter 436, Mobile Retail of the Code of the City of Monroe, on the floor for its final reading.
Second.
By Councilwoman Lomore, supported by Councilwoman Delgrave, on item 3579, Ordinance 22-003, the Mobile Retail Ordinance.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Delgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germany?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-003, An Ordinance to Adopt Chapter 436, Mobile Retail of the Code of the City of Monroe, to repeal Chapter 360, Food Trucks, Mobile Food Vending Units, to repeal Chapter 374, Hawkers, Peddlers, and Transient Merchants, and to repeal Chapter 396, Ice Cream Sales Vehicle, the City of Monroe ordains.
Shall this ordinance pass?
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Delgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germany?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Please.
The next item is Ordinance 22-004, PUD Rezoning for Former Fire Station Redevelopment.
Mr. Pastu, or-
I'm going to have, if you may, Your Honor, Mr. Cochran introduce that to council.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Mark Cochran, Economic and Community Development Director. So this evening, we're requesting City Council hold the first reading and schedule a public hearing for zoning, or an ordinance to rezone the former fire station site and the surrounding parcels on that block to PUD. In total, there's a seven, there's seven parcels that are currently zoned R3. We're requesting to rezone to PUD in three parcels that are mixed use to rezone those to PUD as well. The purpose is to facilitate the redevelopment of the former fire station site and the surrounding properties for mixed use corridor development, as is called for in the city's master plan. The Planning Commission on May 9 did recommend the City Council approve the rezoning request. But for some background information that was presented at the Planning Commission that evening, in 2021, the city began working with Jim Jacobs Architects to develop some conceptual site plans, looking at what the redevelopment of the fire station site could look like. The redevelopment, the proposed conceptual plan called for a two-story mixed use development at the site of the former fire station at 75 Scott Street, as well as the adjacent site at 317 East First, that's vacant and city-owned. And then the parcel to the east, that's currently a parking lot for county employees, it's envisioned for attached townhouse multi-family units. After we had those discussions and developed the conceptual site plan, we began talking to some potential developers and to gauge interest. We did receive interest back from one developer, and as we discussed with them and talked with them, they expressed some interest in possibly redeveloping the entire block, which would be bound by Humphrey Street to the north, First Street to the south, Scott Street to the west, and Wadsworth Street to the east. And so, the zoning code does allow the city to initiate a rezoning. How it works is the city can initiate the request to rezone the properties, and then later come back to the Planning Commission and City Council for approval of a PUD plan, as well as a PUD agreement with the developer. This is very similar, exact process that we followed on the Lazy Boy site when the city initiated the rezoning of that to PUD and brought forth the documents later. And so the, the discussion would be just to help facilitate the redevelopment with additional steps to follow in the future. I'll say today, I got a draft of the draft PUD design guidelines that will present to City Council, or the Planning Commission, and then engage the developer for a conversation going forward on what the PUD agreement would look like. Again, this is a development that would be completed by a private developer, not by the city. I've had a lot of conversations with some of the neighbors who have asked what this means for their property, what it means for the future. Let them know that any development that would occur, if, if the developer's interested in purchasing their property to expand on the development, it would be discussions that would be held between the private property owner and the developer, not an incident where the city's looking to acquire any properties as part of this redevelopment.
Thank you. And I know that there's meetings held with the property owners in the surrounding area, there's a meeting for them to attend.
Yes, correct. And they attended the public hearing at the Planning Commission, and we talked a lot about this, had very, I would say, robust conversation at that public hearing. And they would also get notice of the public hearing of City Council schedules at tonight to participate and attend.
Very good. Is there any questions for Mr. Cochran from the council? Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
So this item is up for Council Action to the first reading, and then also the public hearing, second reading. Councilwoman Lomore?
Yeah, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to the City Council initiate approval of the proposed rezoning by, one, conducting the first reading of the ordinance to amend the zoning of the subject parcels from R3, Single Family Residential, or MU2, Corridor Mixed Use, to PUD, Planned Unit Development. Two, establishing Monday, July 18, 2022, as the date for the public hearing and second reading for the proposed ordinance. And, three, authorizing amendment of the official zoning map of the city of Monroe upon final approval.
There was a motion by Councilwoman Lomore, supported by Councilwoman Delgrave, regarding item 3608, Proposed Ordinance 22-004, as stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Delgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germany?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-004, An Ordinance to Amend Zoning Map of Chapter 720 of the Code of the City of Monroe, Michigan, to rezone the properties located at 43 Scott Street, 49 Scott Street, 314 Humphrey Street, 318 Humphrey Street, 322 Humphrey Street, 326 Humphrey Street, 56 Wadsworth Street, 75 Scott Street, 317 East First Street, and 60 Wadsworth Street. That's it. That's it.
Thank you.
All right, ready?
Ready.
The next item is item 3607, Approval of Naming Policy.
Mr. Pastu's pointing to me, so I guess I'll start.
(laughing) I can introduce it if you want.
So I will introduce it. I think the fact sheet speaks for it with approval of the naming policy. I think it's something that's been in the long discussion with the council, well over a year, on a variety of opportunities. But before the council this evening, we did have our work session previously to take some of the comments and suggestions, which were drafted into as well. But the, the policy establishes the process considering seawide owned property, as parks, alleyways, recreational areas, municipal buildings, facilities, and public right of ways. And there's a lot of considerations or criteria within this, naming of the city-owned property. But it also establishes a workflow from the application requests, through the administrative review, a review by the Ethics Committee for completeness of the application, but also items that may come up for consideration. And then it comes back to the City Council. So I, I just want to, before we go further on that part with the council, if they have any questions, I do want to thank the committee of Councilwoman Vining and Councilwoman Felder, myself, but also the support that the committee received as we worked through that, many, many drafts. I've stopped numbering after, I think, eight or nine, which is while the hard work was at. But also the support from the administration, Clerk Treasurer Lavoy, because there is a component within the clerk's office, and our communications director. So I just want to start by saying thanks there. But the naming policy, I think, something that the community has asked for, something we've talked about. And I guess if there's any comments or questions, let's see if we can, the committee can answer those. I'll see if there's any comments from the council members. So it's, it's, it's up for approval for the naming policy and to adopt the naming policy as presented. Councilwoman Delgrave?
Your Honor, I'm just going to make the motion-
Sure enough.
-to move to adopt the naming policy as presented.
Motion by Councilwoman Delgrave, supported by Councilwoman Germany, item 3607, Approval of the Naming Policy. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Delgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germany?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is item 3592, Former Lazy Boy World Headquarters Site, Phase II Infrastructure Construction Contract Award.
Mr. Pastu?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to ask Mr. Lewis if he'd come up for the next two items. They're related to the Lazy Boy site, this one in particular, with the infrastructure bid for phase two of the development.
Thank you, Mr. Pastu. I almost said you were going to say next two hours or something, but I'm glad you said next two items. Mr. Lewis?
Of course, I'm sure I could find a way.
No, we don't. I don't think it's necessary. But we want you to be detailed and complete.
Mayor and Council Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. I give you as much or as little as you want on this one, but essentially, this was the, what we're calling the largest infrastructure package on this. And this is most of the remaining work that we have left to go to make the site ready, with some exceptions on there. And we, I can go into those, but, but this is mostly the extension of Huber Drive from its current dead end to basically intersect with Greenfield on the north, which would include a culvert over the Mason Run drain. It includes the detention system for the entire site south of the drain, keeping in mind that that, everything north of the drain has to provide their own detention because they're smaller sites. This is a common pond for everything south of Mason Run. And we're doing some things like the raised intersection at Huber and Holiday, where that extension will come through. There's a number of other little, little things in there, but it's, this will essentially be the big enchilada, if you will, for, for the remaining construction work for, for the public infrastructure. We did have, we were fortunate. I'm, I'm pleased with the way we structured the bids and the bids that we did get. We only had two bidders, but we had two bidders that were both county contractors and were deemed to be responsible bidders by the terms of our ordinance. So, and the good news is, we were about $300,000 under our estimate. So that was a very positive development, given what we've seen in the construction industry. I think one of the big things that that had to do with was we gave them a July 31, 2023 completion on the whole thing, with the understanding that none of these pieces were critical for anybody that wanted to open this year. So you do have some construction. Dairy Queen is kind of on its own. Their, their detention system's on their own. This is, Dairy Queen's not reliant on any of these. And the three-unit, all-rig development that was approved on the north side of Holiday, the only thing centered dependent on that is, they can still use a temporary storm outlet, and then we have to extend a private, or a public sanitary sewer for their private connection. That's included in this contract, and that has to be done this summer. So ER Zeiler was the lowest bidder, and they did commit that they could take care of that. But it fit neatly into their schedule. They said they're going to do most of the underground work, the grading, things like that, from late fall to winter. And as you know, that depends somewhat on our, what our winter conditions are. But they have no problem meeting the July completion date, and we do not believe any of our potential tenants or those that we're already aware of have any concerns about that next July being a completion date. So, as I mentioned, we did have, we were able to prequalify both bidders for the rest of the season. That was Saline Bean Trucking and Excavating was the second low bidder. They scored a 95 on the prequalification, as did ER Zeiler. And they were the low bidder on this one. We expect both of those two to bid on at least the St. Mary's Gardens project, which will be coming out in the next couple, three weeks. And then we did prequalify ER Zeiler subcontractor, that was Oglesby Construction of Norwalk, Ohio. They scored, I think, an 85. So we're all good there. The only thing that's sort of still up in the air is the paving contractor. And that wasn't picked yet because the paving work will not occur until 2023. So rather than submit someone that may not be following through, I think they're still evaluating who's going to be able to do it next spring. So that will, and obviously, they will have to meet the terms of our responsible bidder ordinance at that time. So I think that covers most of what we've, most of what we've got on here. We're asking for a 10% contingency on this. I think that's really all I wanted to add. Just very, very pleased that we got two, two good quality contractors, and we had a good low bid. And certainly be happy to see this get underway.
I'll see if there's any questions from council for Mr. Lewis. Councilwoman Felder?
Yeah, I was excited to see it come in under our estimate. Both bids were under the estimate-
Yes.
-and both bids scored 95 on, on the qualif-, I didn't see Saline Beans, but I know that they're a professional outfit, and we doing a lot of work with them. And I'm happy that they're going to be qualified for the rest of our season. And ER Zeiler Sub got in there too. So it seemed like it was something new to them. I think there were parts of the form that they left blank. But hopefully, you know, once there's some familiarity built there, they'll be able to fill that out more completely, and we'll just have a better operating relationship with them as we continue our work together. But I think it was great, two, two very professional, qualified contractors at very good prices.
And I will note, Councilman, that we, we did, the engineering department took the failure to complete forms properly on the first bidding for most of our contractors as a failure on our part to convey the required information. So we updated the form, added quite a few more pages on there, and I think it was rather self-explanatory. There were, there were no questions or concerns this time with those submitting it. So we, we elaborated, gave them sort of a step-by-step cookbook, and I think that, that helped quite a bit.
Yeah. Growing pains are fine and to be expected.
Yes.
Any further comments? If not, a motion? Councilwoman Lomore?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll make a motion that a contract for the Lazy Boy Site Redevelopment, Phase II, Huber Drive Improvements Contract be awarded to ER Zeiler Excavating Incorporated in the amount of $1,790,130.50, at a total of $1,970,000, be encumbered to include a 10% contingency, that the mayor and clerk treasurer be authorized to execute the contracts on behalf of the city, and that the Director of Finance be authorized to set up any necessary accounts, make any necessary budget amendments, and to appropriate, appropriate funds to the correct fiscal year.
Second. So, one finger, one voice. So there's a motion by Councilwoman Lomore, supported by Councilwoman Felder, on item 3592, the Former Lazy Boy World Headquarters Site, Phase II Infrastructure Construction Contract Award. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Delgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germany?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item is-
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, I'm sorry.
And one, Purchase of Wetland Mitigation Credits Lazy Boy Site Redevelopment.
Mr. Pastu?
Let's do the introduction for this item.
Hasn't left, so I kind of assumed he was going to be following this one as well.
Not our number two.
Right, correct. Go ahead, sir.
This is, this is another portion of the Lazy Boy project. This has so many moving parts and so many pieces. It's been, it's been a very interesting, very interesting process. And I know Mr. Cochran and I may or may not have any hair left by the time this is done, but it's, it's certainly enjoyable to work through the process. And I, I'd like to thank him for his assistance, as well as Adam Mr. Leroy, who's helped me with reviews on the utilities as well. He's, it takes a whole team here to, to get this project done. So one of the things that we, we have to, we have to do is, with our, what I'd call two-year- with our, what I'd call, two-year slog with Eagle, which is the Michigan Department of Environmental, Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. We do have, on the piece of property that was never developed east of what will be Huber Drive, there were some very small, very low-quality wetlands found. And while they're disconnected, they're not really supporting any habitat, they are still classified as listed wetlands. So we're required to remediate those somehow. Eagle really wanted to see us do our best to try to incorporate those into a site plan. And we have some mock-up of that. That piece will be residential. We had some mock-ups of what could work. We did incorporate one of the smaller wetland areas into a supplemental pond that will be built when that piece develops. But they did, the remaining wetlands, they allowed us to remediate off-site. And when we say remediate, we basically mean replace. So the requirement is usually you have to do 150% of the area that you are displacing. So we had .53 acres of wetlands that were displaced. So we had to purchase wetland credits for .79 acres. They let us round down, so that was nice, instead of .80. So we had to remediate those off-site. And there is a wetland bank within the River Raisin watershed that we were able to purchase. In fact, the Eagle permit stipulated that we were to purchase from that bank. There is talk of a governmental bank that's being looked at, constructed, that we could have gotten into a little cheaper, but it's not online yet. And Eagle said, we're not going to issue the permit for something that's not online. So we did have to pay the higher rate of $120,000 per acre. So multiplying that by .79 gives us the $94,800 that we are required to appropriate. And it's essentially purchasing a credit into a wetland area that already exists, that was constructed sort of upfront money, that then they're anticipating people like us would need to purchase credits into that wetland. So that's essentially it. We're asking for your authority to spend that money and finalize the terms of our Eagle permit with respect to the site.
Councilwoman Vining, have a question?
So, what are you doing with the credit?
Basically, we're paying somebody else for something they already constructed in another area within the River Raisin watershed, which is a functional wetland, which will accomplish the things that our wetlands really aren't doing and can't do, because they're low quality, they're not deep enough, they're not connected to a waterway. So essentially, a party, in this case, it was the Nice Wender Farm, whatever the entity is, I think it's called something, Haley Farm LLC is the corporate entity, they basically, I don't want to say speculatively, but constructed a large-scale wetland in another location that is big enough, connected enough to support the vegetation, support the animal species, and things like that, so that it's available. And so they'll lay the money out in advance, knowing that there are development projects within the watershed that will need wetland credits, because we can't effectively create this wetland on-site without jeopardizing the development. So essentially, they lay out the money in advance, people like us have to pay for credits, and they know that over the years that those will be available. And so this is something that's already constructed. So we're essentially paying somebody for something they built, so that we don't have to.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. It's very cryptic, and hopefully I explain it correctly, but that's essentially what I view it as.
So the 94,8 they could use to better the wetlands that's actively there, or that they might build in the future?
Potentially. I mean, we don't get into the business of whether they're going to expand. Presumably, they already have wetlands that have unused credits. They essentially constructed something they wouldn't have otherwise had to, in anticipation that people like us and other private developers might need to do that very same thing. It's essentially paying them back for what they already constructed on our behalf, even though at the time they constructed it, they didn't know on whose behalf they were constructing it.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilwoman Germani?
Mr. Lewis, will this conclude any obligation we have with Eagle with this project?
I believe that is the case. Their permit included both the wetlands issue, the detention pond permitting, and the storm outlet, as well as the culvert crossing of Huber Drive over the drain. So all of those, in fact, that was why it was such a holdup with them, because they wanted all of those in one single permit. Even though they could have been severable, they wanted those all put together. So our belief is that we're done. There are a couple of items that we might end up doing that they might want to look at, but those would be the pedestrian bridges, if we build one or both of those pedestrian bridges over the drain. But we believe that those will be above the high watermark, so they won't have jurisdiction over that. So.
That's a big hurdle for us.
Yeah, so I can't ever say, when you're dealing with a state regulatory agency, I'll never promise you we're done. But we believe we're done, and we'll fight pretty hard if we have to go back for something else.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Stillgrave, do you have, okay. Councilwoman Moore?
Yeah, I did have one other thing. You mentioned something about possibly improving other areas where, I'm not sure if it included this area in particular, to allow it to be part of the wetlands on-site or not?
Yes, and it was, there's a small area, I'll say, at the very south edge of the property, where there was one of these, I keep calling them low-quality wetlands, and that's not a derogatory term. It just means that they're not.
Very accurate.
Yeah, they're not able to really do what wetlands are supposed to do. But Eagle seems to have people on their staff, and I think that was a frustrating thing. Every call we had, we had nine or 10 people on it, and they all came from different sectors. And one of those really, really, really wanted to see at least something be attempted to be incorporated into the development plan. So there is a supplemental detention pond that has not been constructed yet, but because we weren't able to get everything into this common pond. So when that, we call it parcel E, which is essentially everything east of Huber Drive, south of the drain, which is always intended to be one comprehensive residential development. There's what we call the dry pond, because the big pond we're constructing here, which I should have mentioned, is a retention pond, which means it's always going to have water in it. Whereas this other pond would be what they call a dry pond. It's intended to dry down after every event. And that's the one where we made it just a little bit bigger, so that we could incorporate one of those wetlands into that dry pond. But it's only required to be done when we build that residential piece, because technically speaking, until we build something on that residential piece, we don't have to touch these wetlands. But we all know that if a development partner comes on board, they're going to want to move quickly. So we wanted the permits all in place.
So this is going to basically satisfy our obligation with Eagle and that, with what their wishes were?
Yes.
Correct. We're not going any further with that, like Michelle said, which is great. I'm glad to hear that, because it has been a painful process, needless to say. And I haven't really partaken in it, really, like you guys have. But yeah, it's been very painful. I agree.
Yeah. We believe this is the end of it, although, like I said, we do have to incorporate that wetland into that pond we build it. But they've allowed us and permitted us to already do that, so we know what we need to do, just have to do it.
Great. Councilman Felder?
Thank you, sir. Two points. Mr. Lewis, I have to be critical. You sound like a skeptic up there, talking about government bureaucracy.
Well, and the funny thing is, too, I had this discussion. I actually went to college with the Director of Eagle, so we actually discussed the Lazy Boy project at alumni band this year. So that was rather interesting. But, you know, they're there for a reason. They have their, you know, they have their charges in each one of them. And I think they do serve, you know, a positive function. It's just, this is a very unique site, and it's, unfortunately, sometimes the need to move quickly with those many interchangeable parts can be difficult. I've always said, government works best when it's close to the people, so I can both have my cake and eat it, too, and be a government bureaucrat. But I think it works better at this level, where it's closest to the people.
Yeah. No, that's great. And I just, I do want to highlight some of the public good of why this is, you know, why we're having to pay this, why this is a thing. And then I have a logistics question on the back end. But because, you know, I guess, for the public and for the environmentalist in me, I guess it's part of a wetlands preservation strategy. I mean, this is what big nonprofits, is a huge part of what nonprofits like Ducks Unlimited and Pheasants Forever mostly contribute to, is wetlands preservation. So whenever development is happening, if there was no preservation anywhere of the piece of property that was being developed on, wetlands are shrinking all over the state, all over the country. The entire state of Toledo used to be, the city of Toledo used to be one. And so as development happens, if it's not being preserved somewhere, it's just gone. And it, I mean, these are landscapes that have huge ecological benefits. So I do, there is a value in preserving them somewhere in the state, even if it's, even if we need to develop here, so let's move it somewhere else. On the back end, we're purchasing the credit. We're eventually going to transfer the property to a developer, who then may transfer it to another developer, who will eventually build on it. Are we being reimbursed for the expense of the credit that we're incurring now before the development takes place?
That's more of a question, I think, of how we're, you're going to get into a whole different question of financing this whole project. I'll punt that to Mr. Pastoo.
Well, you know, part of it is, is with our development agreement, is that some of the site readiness was something that we had taken on to be financed through the brownfield tax increment. You know, that would be inclusive of the, you know, the demolition of, you know, the property, the building. I would include this as part of that, and some of the preparation associated with some of the infrastructure. The developers got, you know, they put $3 million into it as well for us to do that as well. So, you know, I don't think we did a fine tuning of, you got this, we got that. But pretty much, site readiness is what we were responsible for. And regrettably, I, you know, I'm a proponent of good stewardship. I'm not sure that this is in my case, probably politely, is kind of what I thought was a bit of a bureaucratic overreach. But we still have to go forward with it. And I would include this as, much like the demolition cost that we incurred as part of the site development to get it ready for the developer, so.
Okay. I have some, but I won't. I think Mr. Pastoo said exactly what I was going to say. We're, I think we're all looking at wetland mitigation and why that's important, that we do have locations that have to be changed. This was challenging from the perspective of, you know, did it meet all the definitions and criteria that required the extent at which Eagle, I'll say, put forth that had to be done. But we're here now, and we're going to get it done, so we'll move forward. So I'll leave it at that. With that, if there's no other comments, Councilwoman Moore?
Just make a motion that the attached agreement with Haley Farm LLC be approved, that the city manager or his designee be authorized to execute it on behalf of the city, that $94,800 be appropriated for the purchase, and that the Finance Director be authorized to make any necessary budget transfers and/or appropriate funds from the brownfield bond or other appropriate sources.
Motion by Councilwoman Moore, supported by Councilwoman Stillgrave on item 3591, Purchase Wetland Mitigation Credits for Lazy Boy Site Redevelopment. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Lamoore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Clerk, next item?
The next item was taken from the consent agenda. It's item 3601, Authorization for Code Enforcement Legal Action.
Thank you. Mr. Pastoo?
Thank you, Your Honor. This item is just, we're requesting that the property at 423 Washington Street be removed. The Coda enforcement officer feels that they have sufficiently abated the blight and don't feel that there's necessary legal action to go forward. We would still move forward with 1431 Hagan. So when you look at the motion, it would just be authorizing action for the property at 1431 Hagan.
Any questions from council on the item? Seeing none, it'd be a motion regarding item 3601. Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Your Honor. Make a motion to authorize the city attorney's office to proceed filing complaints and pursuing circuit court judgments to enforce blight, abatement, and/or code enforcements at 1431 Hagan Street.
Motion by Councilwoman Moore, supported by Councilwoman Germani on item 3601, authorizing the code enforcement legal action as stated for the one property. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Lamoore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item is item 3596, Custer Airport Selection of Standing Consulting Firm.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stillgrave?
Yes, Your Honor. This has all been done before I got here. So I just want some clarification on all this, of, you know, what this is about and all that.
So I know Mr. Pastoo, or maybe it's going to be Mr. Lewis, probably.
I have Mr. Lewis do an explanation of the role that selecting a consultant plays in the airport and the funding that we receive from the Michigan Bureau of Aeronautics, as well as federal, a lot of money goes into it, but we got to have consultants, so.
Well, we had a work session that kind of touched on this coming forward. Councilwoman Stillgrave is right. This goes back to last year and discussion, and we talk about our goals and objectives. So, you know, what is the Custer Airport? What is it to be? What do we have to do? And how do we get there? And I think that this kind of brings us everybody. It's great to bring it up, not only for council to hear kind of the review, but those present here and those also that are watching and gets reported of why this is coming forward regarding the Custer Airport and what it really means. Mr. Lewis?
Certainly. I could give you two hours on the history of Custer Airport, but I will not.
Thank you.
I'll give you maybe five minutes. But some of this, obviously, as you know, the city of Monroe owns and operates Custer Airport, and we have since the 1980s. There's the discussion that council has had, and I would probably be looking to council to have some more discussion on that in the coming year or so, about what the airport, what we want it to be, what things we can move forward. Because we actually are at a unique opportunity here with additional federal funds, that we can spend it on some projects we've been restricted from in the past. So I'll give you a little bit of a funding primer, if you will. We're a general aviation airport, and we're, I'll just call it entitlement. It's a federal entitlement under the Aviation Act, where we get $150,000 per year in federal spending, we'll just call it federal funds, that we can use on any of our, any eligible projects. And the state of Michigan administers those funds through a block grant process, although I'm come to understand that process is going to be radically changing for the next year, because the FAA has said they don't like the way they do it. So my comments now won't be accurate a year from now, but that, as for the time being, essentially the way it's worked in the past is, we can bank up to four years' worth of money for use in any federal project. So we can have up to $600,000 in the bank, if you will, for an eligible project. And then that has to be matched with 5%. So in other words, the federal share would be 90%, the state match is 5%, and we match 5%. So those are the normal, routine federal funds. And the projects we've used those on most recently are, and we actually haven't had a project out there in the last four years, because we've been banking up for something bigger. But we have had some projects where we've rehabilitated pavement around the hangars, we've worked on the concrete apron. It's usually something like a paving job, because as you know, we essentially have a 5,000-foot-long by 100-foot-wide runway. That's a lot of pavement. We also have a 35-foot-wide by 5,000-foot-long taxiway. That's also a lot of pavement. And so we've got a lot of those hangar areas and taxiways. So when you add it all up, we spent, we're going to spend more than $150,000 a year just on pavements. So what happens in those years is, for additional large projects, like the runway rehabilitation, which can be $3 or $4 million, or the taxiway, which is our next project coming up, which can be up to $2 million, the state typically brings what they call discretionary dollars to the table. And so we're supposed to be banking up four years, and then the state says, okay, you only have $600,000, but you need $2 million, we'll give you 1.4. The city then still has to kick in 5% of that $2 million project. So we would still owe $100,000 on that larger project. So that's kind of the way the federal funding works at the airport. What we've had happen with the latest bill, and I always get the bill names confused, exactly what they call it, but it's basically the COVID bill for airports. They gave us, and I don't know how they came up with this number, it was $157,000 per year for general aviation airports, which is available for the next five. So then that sunsets. Unlike the 150 that we get every year, that 157 sunsets after the fifth year. We can bank that up, we can spend it all at once, you know, year by year. But essentially, what that means is, we're going to have another large pot of money, a little short of $1 million, that we can spend on something else. Couple of things we need at the airport, we raise revenue for the airport on two, from two things, hangar rent and fuel sales. In fuel sales, we do a markup on there, and I won't tell you exactly what the markup is. I can tell the council if they ask. But it's a markup, it's not hugely significant, but, you know, there's incentive for us to push fuel and move that through. And then hangars, we rent for between 175 and 275 per space, except for a couple of the big ones, which are larger. So bottom line is, the city council usually approves a budget each year that subsidizes the airport to the tune of $40,000 or $50,000 a year. Some years, it's zero, if we don't have to do a lot of plowing snow and things like that. Some years, it's $40,000 or $50,000. So it's in that range. We try to get that to zero as much as we can. So some of our background needs that we need, that we aren't normally allowed to spend our federal funds on, are things like the fuel farm. We haven't had any significant upgrades to the fuel farm in over 25 years. We have a Jet A tank that is fine. It's underground, and it's fine. But we have a lot of the mechanisms freeze up, things like that, because it's underground. Water gets in, there's leakage into the housing, into the plumbing, that we need to pump it. So there's, we need to modernize our credit card readers, things like that. A lot of smaller projects that we normally can't afford to do. And of course, the big one, which is where council will come into, weigh into what you'd like this to be, is the first hangar you come to come to, when you, when you drive in off of Airport Road, was sort of the original, I'll call it a terminal in quotations, because it's not like it's a passenger terminal where you're catching a flight to Las Vegas or something. It's, it's largely just a place that you can meet. That, and that was leased out for, oh, probably 15 years to the Monroe County Sheriff's Department. They stored their helicopter in there. And a few years ago, they, they sold the helicopter, and, and that's now been kind of vacant. That building is in fairly poor shape, but it's got a challenge in that it houses our electrical systems for the entire airport, and the Jet A fueling pump, it's where the, where the reader is and things like that. So, we need to do something with that building. We're trying to figure out what. And some of that has to do with the council's vision for what you'd like to see there. So, the, the nice thing about the additional COVID monies that we didn't have is, before, the state told us, you're not allowed to use the federal dollars you get, your general entitlement, for any revenue generating facility. The COVID bill specifically says, you're supposed to use these funds for something other than you already have in your plan, which is kind of nice. And we're trying to take advantage of that because we're saying, this is our opportunity to finally spend some of that money on our revenue generating facilities to bring them up to snuff. Because we're not setting aside a capital reserve for any of those hangars, we're not setting aside a capital reserve for the fuel farm. So, at some point, something's gonna fail, and the council's gonna have to appropriate general fund dollars to cover those. So, there's your, there's your, I'll say your funding primer, if you will. I'll stop there because it gets more convoluted from that point. But, aviation consulting, as you might expect, is a specialty business. Believe it or not, I actually had an airport planning class in college, but I am not qualified to do this work. So, the state requires every five years that you're supposed to hire a consultant that will do those projects for you. We've let it ride for eight or nine years because we didn't have a project in that four-year window. So, the nice part was, I didn't have to do it until now, but we, we're coming up on the taxiway rehab, so we, plus the additional federal COVID dollars. So, we're, we're having to select a consultant for a five-year term. And that's a federal requirement that you do, and you give them, you bid it, and you give them a set of projects and everything else. So, we, we received three proposals, we reviewed those proposals, had a very difficult decision this time. One of the consultants hadn't worked with us before and hadn't done a lot of airport work in Michigan, so we, we decided that they were the third most qualified. But, the other two firms were, our firm that we've used for 20 years, and that's RS&amp;H, who is probably the largest aviation consultant in the state, maybe in the country. And then see, the CNS companies, who is also a big player, and, but a little bit smaller. And they tend to focus a little bit on smaller airports like ours. RS&amp;H has some bigger jobs, but both of them, both of them do large and small. So, that's why you have this in front of you with no money attached to it, because it's essentially just picking who we're gonna use for the next five years. And the way that, the way their fees are calculated is they're project by project. They don't charge us to come down and meet with us. In fact, I'll be meeting with CNS later this week or next week. That, we won't get a charge for that meeting. We don't get a charge for them going to our annual capital improvements meeting in Lansing. But, their fees are driven solely project by project, and those are eligible for federal dollars. So, unlike the roadway side of things where we have to pay the engineering fees out of our own pocket, and then the 80% federal share goes to the roadway, these are ones where the, the design fees are included in that federal share. So, that's why you have an agreement in front of you to select and endorse our five-year selection of consultants without any dollars attached to it. But, this will be the firm that we're expected to use for the next five years. And, and why it was a tough decision was, we have very good relationship with the firm we've been using for 20 years, and that's RS&amp;H. And I have good relationship with the project manager assigned to us. But, they haven't done a project with us yet, that project mentioned, project team. CNS companies, the project manager and quality control person were our last two project managers. They actually moved from RS&amp;H to CNS companies. So, I sort of feel like I've got two really, really good firms we can pick from here, but we, the selection team did pick CNS, the CNS companies, based on their attention to us, which they've been giving even the last four years when they haven't been our consultant. Aaron, the project manager, was our last project manager the last time we did a large job. So, all I'm asking you to do is endorse our consulting choice, but the discussion was really good, and I appreciate the question because it allowed me to, again, stress the importance of the airport and some of the things that we might be able to do with it in the years to come.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Questions or follow-ups?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm satisfied now.
Okay. I appreciate this opportunity, really. I think we've talked about, I think this at least lays some foundation of why this is on the agenda and where we may be going and what the possibilities are. Councilwoman Felder, you have a question?
Yes. We've had a conversation for, for a few years regarding a comprehensive plan about overhauling our vision in the operations of the airport. Do we expect that plan to evolve out of this relationship?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. And, and whether that, we may need to put some city general fund money into a, I'll, I'll say like a conceptual study of some things, because those wouldn't necessarily be, I mentioned that they're project by project specific. Whether it was CNS or RS&amp;H, we were going to be probably paying for some type of study to look at, are we charging enough for our hangars? What, you know, what capital reserve do we need to have set aside? What would, what would the cost of a terminal building be, a rehab? Because that's another thing. And I didn't mention that, that we are actually eligible for a competitive grant on top of our 157,000 a year, if we put together a solid enough plan that, that the FAA would look to fund. So, those will all be things that we would engage the CNS companies, and Aaron's excited to get started. He's already called me twice today. So, we're ready to roll.
So, just a follow-up for myself. I, I appreciate this coming forward. As I said, the fact sheet, I think, identifies what some of the shortfalls and needs are at the facility, you know, for their consultant service, their proposal. You know, it talks about the, Mr. Lewis talked about the funds and current federal funding, but there's also opportunities that are out there that they, I thought was good to read within their opening letter about the bipartisan infrastructure law. Then, and they're looking at possibilities of that, plus other FAA funding sources. Those that, I want to delve into this and read the whole thing. I thought the information in the middle, which talked about their company and the, the like facilities where they've done work, that was, I think, impressive as well. But, I think the last part, where, the last section in the proposal, which was about familiarity and understanding, that really kind of hit home to what, what quality they looked at, what they were considering in their conversations with the city, what the key project focuses were. I think the, the displays or charts they had, I think the, about the airport and highlighted the points that would be accessible were, I think, impressive as well. Then, the other possible projects, the summary gets right to the point of what they're going to bring. So, I appreciate the write-up, the re, information that was presented, and the work of the committee to make the selection. So, if there's no other comments, no, Councilwoman Stilgrave, you gotta fold it. Do you wanna, any motion? Or you wanna?
I'm, I'm gonna make the motion.
Very good.
So, I move that the city council approve the selection of CNS companies as a city aviation consultant for the years 2022 to 23 through 27, 28, and that the director of engineering and public services be authorized to execute any necessary or desirable agreements to this effect on behalf of the city over the term of the approval.
Second. There's a motion by Councilwoman Stilgrave, supported by Councilwoman Lamore on item 3596, the proposal regarding Custer Airport. Clerk, please call the roll.
Whitman? Stilgrave? Vining? Germani? Lamore? Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Very much.
Thanks, Mr. Lewis.
No further items, Your Honor.
Next item is council comments. It is June, Councilwoman Felder.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank everyone who came out to the trails, Trail Advisory Committee's public session to get, to get public comments. Thank you to everyone who came to that and, and shared with the, the group. I think we're gonna use what we, what you took to prioritize our projects for the future. And then, certainly a thank you to everyone who came out to the, the Juneteenth events this weekend. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Whitman, any comments this evening?
Um, yes, I went to Patty Carroll's retirement party. What a joy it was. And, you know, she has truly been an asset to the community, to many agencies.
Put your microphone on.
And, uh, I am really proud of all the work that we have done in Monroe, and the things, you know, just, just like Deb said, that there's many things that we have been working on, working on, talking about. And I feel like we are on the edge of something really wonderful for our hometown. And, and I'm glad you have been a part of it, you know. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stilgrave?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, the open air event was amazing, the amount of people that came down there, the music. I thought it was fantastic. The family dance at the tennis courts seemed to be pretty well attended, and, you know, people were having fun. Music in the park, I love that. You know, trying to make it down as much as I can. Although I wasn't able to attend any of the Juneteenth celebrations, I did see a lot of pictures in that on Facebook, and I thought that was pretty cool. And, you know, we're gonna have a hot week, so stay hydrated. That's it.
Councilwoman Vining?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, we had a full, beautiful weekend celebrating Juneteenth. And we started at the Opportunity Center on Saturday. That was lots of fun. And then Sunday, we had a beautiful family reunion event at the Montague Park. So, I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for stopping out and hanging out with, stopping and hanging out with us both days. And to the residents, Elmira Streets, and the neighbors for letting us take over their block. Most of them ended up joining in, helping out, and coming to hang out with us. So, I wanted to thank the city departments, not that the city was a direct sponsor of the Juneteenth family reunion celebration, but, you know, the fire department is always helping us out with any neighborhood events we have. The police, I had asked for, you know, just some added security, and just the way they came and mingled with the crowd, it didn't really look like we had added police president, presence. It was more like they were at the party, hanging out with us. So, that was cool. Water Department, DPS, Parks, and Rec, just for always helping us over at the Selma Rankin's Garden, and in any community events that we have. The city departments are always there to help out. I especially wanted to thank Brand Energy Company for building that stage, that beautiful stage for us. And they're gonna come back and rebuild that stage for the Rance Allen Day Event, which the family is calling the Rance Allen Group Street Takeover. That's gonna be on July 3rd, from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Montague Park, 626 Elmira. And there's gonna be full entertainment vendors. Just, it's gonna be a beautiful day. They're tidying it as a rhythm and gospel concert. So, it should be very nice. One of the big highlights of the Juneteenth thing for me, although there were so many, on Sunday, one of our local police officers had a foot race. We were challenging anybody who could beat our local boxing champ, Derrick Miller, in a foot race. We were gonna give him $50. Nobody could beat him. But, I don't know the officer's name with the big thick mustache. Yeah, he almost, he almost beat him, and he was in full uniform and everything. I mean, he came within inches, but he didn't, he didn't win the $50. But, it was fun to have them there, and the kids loved seeing them in the thick of things. So, yeah, we just had a beautiful weekend. Of course, you know, the Opportunity Center presented their new sharing garden to the public, and they, they added picnic tables, and, um, local artist Amy Arnold did a beautiful sign and art over the new archway. So, everything was just so beautiful, and it was nice to see all of the people out. OHM advisors were there with surveys for the people for the Orchard East Community, I mean, sub-area plan. And I feel like they got a really good response. So, so, yeah, we had a great weekend. So, I just wanted to thank everyone who came and everyone who was involved with making that day a success. So, then I had two questions. The first question, just out of curiosity, why aren't we closed today for the observed Juneteenth holiday? Because I know the county and the, you know, the banks and everyone are closed.
Sure. Yeah, you know, a, a city council directive to, to recognize that. So, there's elements that go along with the personnel policy, recognizing a date, but also there's elements of a collective bargaining process that has to be there at recognition. So, unilaterally, we just don't, particularly with the collective bargaining end of it, just make that decision, here's another holiday for you. But, you know, it's one of those things that council can give city administration a directive to, to look into treating that as a holiday and all that would entail, and, and how you'd go about executing it, if that's the policy decision of the city council.
That's what I thought. That's what I was telling the residents. It's probably a labor, you know, bargaining thing. And, and we probably had already finished, and before it became a legal holiday.
We can always bring that back up, though. Yep. No, we can always bring it back up.
Yes. I was just curious. So, thank you for answering that. And then, I just wanted an update on the, what I am now calling the Conant Street Sync Hall.
I shouldn't laugh.
Well, Mr. Pastu?
I'll just give you an update on that. This afternoon, I had talked with, I believe, Ms. Alice Chappelle. And one of the challenges that we had with that is, the, the property owners responsible for any sewer leads that have failed and need to be repaired. Theirs just happened to be in the street itself. And so, there isn't any change in our policy, and it's not an uncommon policy for municipalities to do. So, part of it was, I received a call from her last week. I know Mr. Leroy and his department have had some contact with others. We've even had a discussion at our, our standing meeting with the city attorney, what needs to be done. Fortunately, this afternoon, I reached, in my discussion with Ms. Chappelle, that there's four property owners that go to a quitclaim deed back in, that was filed in 1998. City attorney says, if we're going to perform this work, as the city can do, we have to bill the property owners, but we also have to get their consent. And so, I've got the information. Mr. Leroy, this afternoon, gave me a cost estimate. We'll put that in a form, and then I'll share that with, you know, Ms. Chappelle, that to get all four signatures that we're going to need. Our focus on the cost is gonna be just the repair of the, of the sewer lead, and then the city will handle the, the reconstruction of the road once that's completed, so that they don't incur the cost. But, it's been a long time coming, but it's also been complicated by, I think, a deed that normally we have one property owner, not four. And so, you know, city attorney, when he looked at it, said, yeah, we need to have all four signing this. And so, she seemed pretty confident that we could get that, and we're willing to spread that cost over a few years to, to get the, the work done. So, that, yeah, that was just even since the update I gave you, the conversation I had with her.
That's great, because I had other residents from the block saying that they were having some backups now. So, I didn't know if it was related to that. Also, since I'm talking about Conant Street, I know we did a good job on repaving the parking lot at the fire station, the east side fire station. But, that alley is just horribly overgrown. And, I mean, you literally can't even drive down that alley. So, maybe if we could send the blight guys over there to see who's responsible for that.
Yep.
Because coming, if you were coming north on that alley, you, you couldn't get out. I mean, it is completely overrun with brush. And what made me really notice it is that we're putting this nice new parking lot in there, and then the alley is looking like that. So.
Okay.
Okay.
Take a look at it.
Yep. And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman. And, Mr. Pastu, get a good review regarding the Conant Street item. There were things that were just There were things that were just coming to conclusion yet today that Mr. Pastu did send out to council sometime this afternoon earlier, his update had addressed some of it, so you'll have that as well. You wouldn't have seen it. It was coming last, here through the afternoon before the meeting here, but you'll have that as you have maybe conversations or questions from the residents as well, and I think he was explained well. So I appreciate it bringing it up because those that are here and watching, you would, you know, are concerned as well as we are to make sure we get it done correctly and that we do it in the best way we can. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Councilwoman Germaine.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to give some recognition to Peggy Howard, who's retiring on Friday. All her years of service in the city and all the departments that she's spearheaded and all the work that she's done. Thank her for her service and wish her well in her retirement and future with her grandchildren. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lamore.
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilman Felder was bringing about the Trails Committee meeting, same night there was an MDOT meeting down at the Opportunity Center, which I attended. They were basically a Q and A session regarding how we would like to handle the interchange at Elm Avenue and as well at Front Street. It was very interesting and they were looking for some options as to what they, what us residents think would be a good idea there. There was one option I just brought up to Mr. Cochran yesterday, was a possibility of actually going over the top of the bridge that's currently there with another bridge. You're only building one bridge that way. You're not building one back. You'd only have to build the one over the top, just another option for MDOT to look at. But that was one of the meetings that was going on at the same time, not as well attended, but there were, there were some stakeholders there and it was a very interesting meeting. Wanted to congratulate the DMBN on a great event. The open air event was fantastic. We had thousands of people down here. This is, this is really what we want a city council to see, activity like that downtown Monroe, and this is what we really have to push hard to keep on bringing downtown Monroe. Congrats to Connie Carroll as well as Peggy on their retirements coming up here. And I was present for the opening of the Juneteenth Celebration with the ribbon cutting at the gardens there. This is part of our investment as city council, seeing a lot of the activity going on down there. Some of the decisions we've made recently are coming to fruition down there. What, what a beautiful thing that's been going on down there. It's just, everything's turning out great and I highly recommend if you have not been down to the Opportunity Center recently, that you go down and check it out. It is, is really changing for the good and it's looking great. So congratulations to the Opportunity Center and a good presentation Saturday when I was there. Obviously, taking the MCOP, was receiving the $60,000 check from Lazy Boy, so great to see Lazy Boy reinvesting in our community and all the people that were there to, to watch all that take place. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilman. You can keep that. So just, I think much, much of what's, that is kind of was on my list as well, but I think all the great activities that are going, takes the partnerships, the DMBN with the open air, the community, the Opportunity Center for the Juneteenth. You know, I think as that day went by, you try to find the time with that and other items that are going on. I, you know, I ran into a couple of council members at the Opportunity Center and also at the Juneteenth Celebration at Montague Park that had opportunity to meet some of the council there as well. But this is great community activities and events, just speaks well for our residents of coming together for opportunities that present themselves and, and as I say, share space and enjoy the day. I thought the entire weekend throughout was beneficial and the week before for the activities and look forward more to that. And as we know, we've talked about the concerts in the park and other items that are going on, hope to see everybody there as well. I want to thank council for the item on the agenda this evening, for appointments as we move forward, again, with some additional appointments, some reappointments, but some new appointments as well on the Port Commission as one of those, the BDC, the Post Retirement Healthcare and the Lake Area Transit Board. So as I always say, there's opportunities to serve if you, if you have a desire. I'm always available to talk with anybody that may have an interest in one of the boards' commissions or just try to learn out about them and please call if you do. Couple of items, items coming up, it's, I know we'll have a chance in July, but I want to give people the heads up rather than just a few days before. You know, we've had the opportunity to have a conversation about Robert Salton and Duncanson Society here and his, his work here and his career work back in the 1800s and the well-known black, black landscape artist, Plana Air, as it's called. Well, the, the society and the group of here in the community is gonna have a, another paintout on July 9th of this year. It'll be held around the Aguado Chee Coffee Shop. And I would say if you don't know, there's flyers available, but you can call and, or stop in Aguado Chee or just speak here, we have flyers that are out and about. So you might know that young painter that wants to just take the challenge on and kind of enter. They do some recognitions and awards and as we had, we've talked previously about the opportunity with Fayette, New York as well as in Cincinnati. And the thought is maybe some of the winners of our Plana Air will send those over to their, I won't call it a sister city, but a art relationship that they can display there. Maybe as they do their activities, they'll come and display theirs here. So really kind of make that connectivity for, and raise the awareness of Mr. Duncanson and his great career as a artist that was long forgotten and now we are bringing back, so it's great. I just, I know Peggy Howard was here earlier for our work session. It's been stated already, she's retired here this week. I want to thank Peggy for all her service through her 14 years of service here with the city, but she had many, many years of service beyond that with the county and Riddick Arne, a human resources director. I think she brought well-needed services and worked hard here with the, not just through the contracts, but just personnel and policies and procedures and as we move forward. I think we've had a, we've had strong human resource department here in the city in the past, but Peggy was welcoming and she deserves her time now to spend with her family, grandchildren, and she said, pack a bag, cause they're gonna be busy, she said. So that's good to see. Last thing I have is because it's gonna be coming up very soon, we've already started to hear some of the, I'll say fireworks and knowing what holidays qualify or not, I know Mr. Buds, we had chances to chat. I thought I had my sheet here, kind of give a, just a short, one minute or two of what is allowable, but I didn't bring it with me. So I'm looking to Mr. Buds maybe to help us, just for, again, those that in the community to understand, yes, there's abilities to participate in fireworks, but there's also restrictions and there's also the consideration of your neighbors and the community and make sure that we're doing it correctly. Mr. Buds, if you could kind of give a, just a review what that means, not just the holidays, but also the timeframes and things. Thank you.
Sure, Your Honor. So the state had imposed, I'll say, limitations on what the local government could regulate as far as times and dates of fireworks when they were allowed to discharge consumer fireworks. Those are basically on these following days after 11 o'clock in the morning, so just starting with the beginning of the calendar year, the end, December 31st until 1:00 AM on January 1st. The Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Memorial Day until 11:45 PM on each of those days. June 29th until July 4th at 11:45 PM on each of those days. And on July 5th, if that date is a Friday or Saturday until 11:45 PM. And the Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Labor Day until 11:45 PM on each of those days. Those are the, I'll say, areas where a local government is not allowed to regulate the discharge of firearms, they are, or of fireworks, I should say. Those are, those are allowed during that period of time.
Well, thanks, Mr. Buds. So when you hear that, you're thinking, now, what did he just say and what days can we and can't we? So I just say be cautious. If you don't, if you're not sure, please read about it. It is posted and I'm sure we'll have it posted here on our website as well for awareness for the community. But nothing, if nothing else is said, just be mindful of your residents, your neighbors, your community, those, I'll say, those pets and animals that may be impacted as well. My people be safe and first and foremost, if you decide to partake. And it's not permissible to go to the church parking lot or go in the middle of the street or go to, down to some other vacant parking lot and start shooting them off. That, that's not permissible, just because it's across the street from your home. It's gotta be within yourselves. But please be safe, cause there's enough unfortunate injuries that occurred during this time and I want, we don't want to see that as well. So with that, I think I'll stop. Clerk Trezalavoy.
I just wanted to remind everyone that Tot Lot started today. It's offered in partnership with the Monroe County Opportunity Program. There are quite a few young, young people that have been training for the last couple of weeks to offer some really great free activities for children ages five to 12 at a variety of parks. There's information available on the city's website about it and there's also, Opportunity Center has information as well. I know a lot of people in the city have fond memories of being children and attending those parks and then being Tot Lot leaders, so that's one of those great traditions in the city that continues again this summer and thanks for the, to the partnership we have with the Opportunity Center. I, I think it's gonna be a great summer. And again, that's from June 20, 20th through July 28th and they will be closed the week of the 4th of July.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Pastu.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few items here. One is, you know, following up on council member Lamore's, the public meeting with MDOT regarding I-75 and the interchanges. You know, interestingly enough, one of the consultants was asking about an opportunity for this fall to do a, more of a public presentation and lo and behold, one of the attendees there, unknowing my role with the city, said, oh, the city has these work sessions that people watch. And so I said, you know, that may very well be a good format to, to, to get the word out what they're looking at. So it may be something in September or October. They may choose a different venue or forum, but, but it did get their attention, got mine and so, you know, I kind of made a, an offer. If, if they're interested, we can, we can give them about an hour and 20 minutes, you know, where we know it'll be televised and broadcast across the area, so. The other thing with it is, just my other note is just the website for the fireworks. I'll get with Ms. Egan to make sure that's there. The other thing I was gonna talk with council about in the work session, it ran a little bit longer than anticipated, is the ARPA funding. And if you recall, we've had some ongoing discussion about trying to be very careful and make sure that we meet the federal procurement requirements associated with that. And then lo and behold, Mr. Sell was at the Government Finance Officers Association Annual Conference and some of the discussion dealt with an alternative that, you know, caught my attention, which was essentially we can pay public safety wages out of, using the ARPA money and the money that we would otherwise, you know, have for a project requiring federal procurement, we would essentially pay for the, the public safety wages, transfer that money to our capital projects fund. We would still follow our, our procurement requirements, but it's something that, you know, when I talked to Mr. Sell today, are you comfortable with it? And he said, yeah, very much. So we, we could, we'll put together a proposed, Mr. Sell will put together a budget amendment, but that it will essentially do that whereby we will use that to pay for public safety wages. And it's easy for us to track, very verifiable, but rather than using our general fund, you know, revenues to pay for that this coming year, we're gonna be transferring that to capital projects and it gives us a lot more flexibility. So, Mr. Sell, did I miss anything on that?
That's good for now.
Okay, good, good, good. Our intent is to bring this back to, to city council at the July 5th meeting, you know, for a budget amendment to, to do that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Pastu. I think the possibility of alternatives, when we think about the capital improvements and then we have some that we know are just right there that may, may be able to move forward and just might push them over the, forward to be able to finish something. Now leave that to Mr. Pastu to give those examples that might, might be, where that might be. It's not just to do it because then you have money and what else, just spend it over here. We have and we've talked about these in our capital improvements and our, and our work sessions about things that we know are just a little short and it might get us to where we are able to put forward some projects this, or the development, the planning, the engineering, whatever, this year to be able to bring them to fruition next spring. So I'm very intrigued to hear what that might be and then what kind of that room that might be. So we don't miss the opportunity to still have the other funding items we've talked about on, on the ARPA funds to make sure we're meeting those needs as well. So I look forward to the conversation. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Pastu?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Next is citizens' comments. So citizens' comments, if there's any, anybody present who wished to make comments, just be mindful of the rules of the chamber. You have three minutes to make your comments and I'll just start with that. Please make sure you say your name and address or jurisdiction or residency. So with that, yep, step forward, please. Mr. Bruck's present here. Of course, he serves on the Community College Board of Trustees.
Yes, sir. I'm William Bruck, Erie, Michigan, 10406 Cemetery Road, 48133. I am a trustee at Monroe County Community College. So I just, we just finished up our last meeting of the fiscal year and we passed our budget tonight. I'd like to say we passed a balanced budget, just north of $30 million. And I'd like to talk about the jewel of Monroe County Community College. So I thank you, Mayor Clark and council and, and Ms. Lavoy as well as Mr. Buds and Pastu for allowing me to come and speak for just a moment. I wanted to talk a little bit about where the college stands. We have a lot going on at the college. If you've been following the newspaper, you've seen our new weekly editorial, The Monroe Perspective, that Dr. Kojo Cortez is, is including and trying to stay non-controversial, but yet very informative. So that's a real pride for us as a trustee board. But, but tonight, we were talking about various things moving forward and we set our next year's budget. But overall, there is going to be a decrease in college enrollment across the nation. Last year, Monroe County Community College was one of the two colleges with, community colleges within the state that actually increased enrollment, so we're very proud of that. But this year, we are working to try to also establish more enrollment. And one of the ways we're looking at is through the Michigan Reconnect, which it's a very, very great program that's put forth by the state. It allows 25-year-old or older individuals that do not have a college degree to get a free associate degree and/or a skills assess, or skills certificate. So those are the two options that they have, but it's paid for completely by the state and is for those that are 25 and above. Currently, there is discussion at the state level to lower that to 21. That may or may not happen, but to meet the state's goals, they may lower that to 21. But that is a, a great way to connect our communities with the jewel that we have as a college. We also have a couple of events coming up. Very soon, June 25th and 26th, we have the 7th Annual Native American Pow Wow that will be occurring there on the campus. And I think this is a good way for the campus to highlight what has happened. So obviously, every taxpayer knows they've paid a lot more money. Well, I don't say a lot more money, but they've paid more money to the college in the last few years through the millage. And it's nice to highlight also on August 13th, there's going to be an open house for the newly renovated Campbell Building. And so this is open to the public on the 13th. It is a direct result of our return on our investment from our tax dollars that we put into the college. So I just wanted to make those public as well as, you know, give you the emphasis to get out to your communities about the reconnect, the Michigan Reconnect. It is a wonderful program. It is here for now. Who knows if it will be here later, but that's a great opportunity for people that do not have a college degree and to utilize the facilities that we have all paid for as taxpayers as well. I did want to say one thank you to the city and to the council for the Memorial Day Parade. As a veteran, I have walked in the parade every year since I returned in '04 for my first tour in Iraq. And I'm very appreciative of the city council allowing for the support of the police, et cetera, to allow that to happen, to close down the bridge for that said, period of time. It is very important for us as we highlight those that we stand on the shoulders of. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thanks for being here. Other comments from those present here this evening? Any further comments? I see none.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion from Councilwoman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Stelgrave to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Stelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes, and thank you all for being here. Yes, and thank you all for being here.